I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to address the school committee who isn't already on the agenda? Yes, sir, please come up to the table and identify yourself.
Hi, Dan Bell, Nine Stetson Court. I've got two kids, one's in the school district now, one graduated in 2015. I am on the agenda for the Plymouth South, but I have something, I figured I'm up here and I might as well just address it. I came up in November and we talked about the FCC funding, or the FCC ruling change that was potentially going to affect the EDTV funding. And at that time, it was proposed, and it has since actually been adopted, and I'm sure Gary's aware of it. And I just want, I've noticed that the archive has changed from Vimeo to YouTube for the meetings. I don't think it's for the entire catalog of video, but the reason I bring it up is, I think it's very valuable to have the meetings remain online. And if, for some reason, they're going to YouTube to eventually eliminate what's on Vimeo, I would hope that they maintain those meetings.
They will all be migrated over.
Oh, okay, okay.
They're working on it.
All right. The reason I bring it up is, it's kind of my thing, government transparency. And I spoke at the last selectmen meeting, actually a few selectmen meetings ago, specifically about the archive, because they don't retain the meetings online. And now that there's a threat to the funding, that's one more hurdle the town's gonna have when they start looking for funding elsewhere. Because it's like, okay, what do you got to show for the money that you've gotten? And there's no catalog online. So, it's great, you know, this, done a great job maintaining that catalog. And the reason I said, was just concerned that you will lose.
Thank you, Dan, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the school committee? Seeing no hands, in a moment, I'm gonna ask, excuse me, all of you to join me in a moment of silence. Marion Crocker passed on, at the end of the summer. Marion has been, had been with the Plymouth School Department for 27 years. She worked as a sixth grade teacher at Mandamette Elementary School, and then as a language arts teacher at PCIS. So, certainly in respect and in celebration, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We shall do our student representatives, Plymouth North High School.
Open House for Plymouth North High School will be held on Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. Parents and guardians are invited to attend, follow their student's schedule, and meet with their child's teachers. The Plymouth marching band, made up of both North High School and South High School students, competed last weekend and took first place at the U.S. Band Show in Dartmouth this past Saturday. Band brought home the first trophy for Division 4A. They also received caption awards for Best Music, Best Visual, and Best Overall Effect. Congratulations to all band students. Take a spin in a new Ford vehicle and make money for PNHAS DECA. For every test drive taken, four will donate $20 to DECA and Skills USA, up to $6,000. Saturday, October 12th, 9:30, no, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Plymouth North High School. Must be 18-plus and two-drive, and limit one-drive per household. Both North and South invite all college-bound students, parents, and guardians to attend this college fair, where 150 colleges, universities, and armed services will be able to speak with. This college fair will be held on Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the Plymouth North High School gym. Plymouth North High School varsity homecoming game will be held on Saturday, October 19th, at 7:00 p.m. against Hingham. The Homecoming Dance is October 18th, from 6:30 to 10:00. Tickets will go on sale October 9th through October 16th, before or after school, and room 331 or 247. The cost of the ticket is $15 each, or $10 plus two hand goods. Check or money order only, made out to Plymouth North High School Student Activities Fund. There'll be a FAFSA workshop on Tuesday, October 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. At this event, the guidance department will help parents and guardians navigate through FAFSA worksheet and answer questions. Parents, parent FAFSA workshops are by appointment only, please contact your child's guidance department to reserve your space. Classes will all be held in the computer labs, 227 and 333. PSATs will be given during the school day on October 16th for students in grade nine through 11. Schedules will be adjusted so that all students can take the appropriate level test. Guidance will provide more information for students in the coming weeks. This year's freshman class elections were filled with healthy and ambitious competition. There are 13 students running for office. Students voted in the pack during advisories with the help of the Student Council E-Board. Wednesday, October 19th, is a half-day professional day, dismissal at 11:05. Thursday, October 10th, is Tech Studies Programs Night at Plymouth South. On Monday, October 14th, is Columbus Day, so there's no school. On Tuesday, October 15th, are senior, the due date for Senior Pictures and Bio. And on Sunday, October 20th, NIASC accreditation visit begins. Parents welcome, I believe this is all pertaining to NIASC, parents welcome 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. to 4:30, no, 3:00 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. Full reception cafeteria at 3:00 p.m. Parent interviews with visiting committee are, everyone's welcome, at 4:00 p.m. As you may have already heard, Plymouth North High School has their 10-year accreditation visit with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges starting on October 20th. Years of preparation have taken place to be ready for the visit, including 190-page self-study that every teacher took part in evaluating and creating. The team will be here from Sunday, October 23rd. They will be shadowing select students visiting classrooms and meeting with groups from Plymouth North High School and the district. Parents are welcome to the NIASC welcome reception on Sunday, October 20th, at 3:00 p.m. Parents are also welcome to attend the parents' meeting with the visiting committee at 4:00 p.m., where educators will be able to speak to parents about their experience and their child's experiences at North. We hope you can attend, your input will be valuable in helping the committee understand North and how to help us focus in the next 10 years. The halfway mark for first term was on October 14th. Parents should check Aspen for a progress report on grades. Only students who are in danger of failing will get information mailed home. These last few weeks, our school and Plymouth North High School families have hosted students from Spain in our building and in their homes. The result was an enriching experience for them and for our families. We are lucky to learn from them and have their experience of what it is to be an Eagle. Thank you so much to Ms. JB and Ms. Frabian for their hard-working, hard work putting this together. Our students traveled to their experience, our students traveled there to experience Spain later this year. The esports craze has reached America's hometown, thanks to some hard-working students, as well as Ms. Harrison and Ms. Caroza's thoughtfulness and hard work. Esports is kicking off their first fall season in the second year of their pilot program for Eagle Esports. Nationally renowned Plymouth North News Program and Curriculum was named as a 2019 national finalist for Best Student Newscast. Both North News was also named last year and in years prior. We'll be traveling to Washington, D.C. in June to find out whether or not they win recognition as the nation's best. Good luck, PNN, congrats. We encourage all families to follow us on Twitter and Facebook, and to utilize our website for all the happenings at North. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and now South.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present the updates from Plymouth South High School. Plymouth South has had a very successful open house last week. The parents' staff feedback was excellent, as many families took advantage of the evening to meet their students' teachers and learn about the curriculum for the school year and various programs and departments. Thank you to Skills USA and DECA students, PYDC, the Plymouth Public Library, and South Boosters for adding to make the event special. Tomorrow, we will have a presentation for our junior and senior class. The speaker is Becky Savage, the mother of two high school students who passed away on June 14th, 2015. On this day, they attended high school graduation parties, celebrating their milestone with all their friends and classmates, the reason for their passing, acute alcohol and oxycodone overdose. Students have the option to not attend this presentation. Becky is also presenting for parents and community members Tuesday night at the Plymouth Public Library on South Street at 6:30 p.m. These events are sponsored by the Plymouth Youth Development Collaboration. The homecoming game and dance were also a huge success. Friday was recognized, all the fall athletic captains, drum majors, and color guard captains. Saturday saw approximately 600 students dance the night away. Congratulations to this year's homecoming king and queen, Nathan LaPointe and Hannah Eaton. The marching band competed at the U.S. Band Show in Dartmouth a few weekends ago, and brought home the first-place trophy in their division. They also received captain awards for Best Music, Best Visual, and Best Effort Effect Overall. Students, faculty, and parents raised $2,030 for the fight against pediatric cancer, topping last year's effort by $200. Thank you for all that made going gold at Plymouth South High School such a wonderful and meaningful fundraiser. Our fall captains traveled over to Plymouth North for our annual breakfast. The speaker was 2011 South graduate Noel Christmas, who was the captain of our softball team. Noel currently is working and coaching at Wheaton College. Her message was perfect for our captains as they head into the final weeks of their season. Students from France will be visiting us in a few weeks. Host families from both Plymouth North and Plymouth South High Schools will welcome our guests on October 27th, and have a true one-to-one exchange as our hosting students will travel from, to France in the spring. We have also solidified our Milan one-to-one exchange, as 12 students will be joining us, October 19th to October 30th. Our host students will travel to Milan over February break. The CCTE Program Advisory Meeting and Dinner will take place on Thursday this week. Program meetings start at 6:00 p.m., followed by a guest speaker at 6:45 p.m., and dinner at 7:00. Please join us if you are able to. The college fair is next Tuesday, October 15th, at Plymouth North High School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. PSAT School Day for our sophomores and juniors will take place October 16th. During that testing time, our freshmen will be heading off campus, selecting a few, selecting to visit one of six college tours of the campus as we expose them to post-secondary education. Freshmen will take the PSATs at a date later this fall. Trick-or-treat, enjoy fun family Halloween festival, sponsored by Skills USA and National Honor Society students, on October 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., here at Plymouth South High School. Families will be able to trick-or-treat from vehicle to vehicle, and also enjoy a kid-friendly haunted house. The cost is $10 per person, or $20 for two or more. Plymouth South will host a parent forum regarding vaping and the health risks surrounding it, and our school policy and interventions on October 25th in Culinary Arts. Just a reminder, Wednesday is a half-day for faculty professional development. Finally, from a student's perspective, the Spanish exchange went very well. I received the opportunity to host the, host this exchange student from Spain, September 21st to October 2nd. It was an incredible experience, and we both had a great time getting to know each other during the exchange. I was sad to see her go, and I'm looking forward to going over in April. My family hopes to have her coming again this summer.
Two excellent reports, a great deal of information. I want to ask a question about one of the things you mentioned, but I'll direct it to the central office. The vaping program that was just mentioned, can you tell me something about it? Tell us something about it?
I can speak to that question.
Please do.
One of the goals this year that came out of school council was to have more opportunities to engage parents in a variety of different topics. So, that'll be the first one, we'll do it monthly, and the vaping forum will be about the health risks around vaping, and we'll also talk about the marketing tools that are out there, fake news versus real news. We'll also focus on our interventions, what our school policy is, what we do in terms of rethinking discipline around vaping, in terms of making it more of an educational experience.
And that's an evening program?
That one, we're gonna start off as a breakfast, it's got the light pastries, 7:30 in the morning. We're gonna mix it up, because sometimes we've had evening events that a lot of parents don't make, and then we're gonna try a morning event, because I'll tell you, when we have honors breakfast, they all come, so I'll give it a shot.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that update on that. Any other questions on the student, student reports? None, okay. The next item on our agenda is a school improvement, Dr. Mayestis.
Yes, tonight, we have the Plymouth South High School School Council, and it is led by our principal, Mr. Hannah, he's in his third year, and he has, I think, the record for the largest school council, so come on up and present this, the school improvement plan.
We didn't bribe anyone.
Come on up. If we need more chairs, we'll get more chairs.
Just filter it up, it's right.
Yeah. Both those mics are, should be ready to go, so we can just circulate them when you need them.
Okay. We good?
Yeah, just have a seat, get going.
Good evening, Dr. Sorenson, Dr. Mayestis, school committee members, central office administration. My name is Jim Hannah, and I'm pleased to be here by a wonderful team of new and veteran members of our school council, as we embark on a new three-year school improvement plan. I'd also like to recognize that the Plymouth South administration is here to support us this evening. Thank you all very much, Mark, Mark, Carolyn, you know, we can't do it without you, and I really appreciate you being here. A few members that were unable to join us this evening, social studies teacher Julie Morinsey is on the committee, as well as parent Brian Nolan. Before I ask the committee to introduce themselves, I'd like to thank Ms. Haywood, as well as Mr. Morgan, for sitting on the committee this year. This is Ms. Haywood's second year, Mr. Morgan returns to us from a previous tour duty with Plymouth South. And if Margie was here, I'd like to thank her as well, because she's been on the council quite often, and quite a bit, even Patty was the principal, and Margie certainly has seen our school blossom into the building that it is today. Plymouth South is truly the model comprehensive high school. I say that all the time, Patty probably gets sick of me saying that, but it's true. It's perfectly, it perfectly blends, blends academic programming with advanced career and technical education that is unmatched in the Commonwealth. Currently, we have 1,042 students enrolled, with 50% of those students in a career and technical program. We offer a robust academic program with an extensive course offering, including CCTE electives for students that are not fully enrolled in a Chapter 74 program. We house a district school age, high school age ASD program. We also have the alternative behavioral classroom for the district of Plymouth South. We have a dynamic faculty, an awesome support staff, and excellent athletic and visual art programs, and our graduation rate consistently exceeds 98%, as our dropout rate is below 1%. We offer 19 AP courses, and various online AP courses as well. And finally, we provide numerous school clubs and organizations that our students really love to get involved in. Our school report card from the DESE recently indicates that we're performing better than 28% of the schools en masse, and is showing improvement across accountability measures. Our goal is to improve in these areas. So, let's go ahead and begin with our presentation. If you could take a, switch to the slide, first of all, I'm gonna ask if we go back to the members, Mrs. Gravio. If you could just take the mic and pass that down, and we'll have everybody introduce themselves that are here with us tonight, in what role you play at the high school, or as a community parent member.
My name is Alyssa Tosovich, I'm a biology teacher in the freshman academy.
Christopher Baker, community member, automotive department head and vocational supervisor.
Kyle Levitt, health education teacher, as well as girls varsity soccer and lacrosse coach.
Tracy Dagnew, my daughter is a sophomore currently at Plymouth South.
Julianne Morris, I'm a senior at Plymouth South.
Kristen Buchanan, guidance counselor at Plymouth South.
Michelle Ireland, parent of a freshman.
Carrie Anokian, parent of three Plymouth school kids.
Dan Bell, parent of a junior at Plymouth South.
Colleen Keating, sophomore at Plymouth South.
Catherine Spiegel, junior at Plymouth South.
Cindy Sylvia, CCTE director.
Okay, so what we'd like to do tonight is, first of all, we just recently met, it's actually, our first meeting took place prior to our appearance here at school committee. A clear focus last, over our last two years, was centered around the district strategic plan. So, one thing I wanted to focus on tonight is sharing some of the results of our two-year plan, and then move into sharing the new goals that the school council have created. Our two-year plan that took place from 2017 to 2019 was a focus on MCAS data analysis, social-emotional wellness, and exposure to post-secondary education opportunities. And we were very pleased to share that when we did our MCAS data analysis, we had tremendous amounts of support from our coordinators. The math, science, and English all came in and worked with our teachers. We had collaboration throughout the course of the year. We provided them with clear data for them to analyze MCAS scores in areas that needs improvement. Highlighting just a few of the things on this list, one thing I will say is that the scope and sequence that the coordinators worked with our teachers and provided an opportunity for framework revisions was outstanding. This, all of these drive the instruction to improve our student achievement. Obviously, the next-generation MCAS exam that the students had to take was new for our students, and being outside of the year, let's see, who had that, Catherine would've had it last year as a sophomore, being done on the computer as opposed, as opposed to a paper-based test certainly was a change, and the scoring's different, and Ms. Whittle could talk all night about that, right? But ultimately, we, we have shown some signs of improvement. So, on the next slide, it took little pits and pieces of the data from the school report card, and as you see, the comparison between 2018, 2019, we had slight overall positive change. We hope that new initiatives that we put out with our school council, focusing on the co-taught model, will help our special education students or our lower-performing students improve overall. But as you can see in ELA, we did meet our target, we actually exceeded our target as a school in 2019. And the next piece was for Science, Technology, and Engineering, which this here is a grade-nine Biology. Students that took the grade-nine Biology test in 2019, our scores were not where we wanted them to be. In meeting with Dr. Campbell and Allison Riordan, the science coordinator, it was evident that the Biology frameworks have recently changed, and a lot of those frameworks, as Allison would share with you, have not been something that the kids have been exposed to in the past, starting with eighth-grade science. And those life science skills, and organic molecules, and the complexity of just learning about genetics is something that kids are starting to learn a little bit more now, but maybe not have been exposed as much coming into the grade-nine. So, she attributes that, but she's very confident that the framework revisions in Biology, as well as the work that she's gonna be doing with her freshman academy teachers, and reaching out just recently to Mr. LaRanger, is gonna prove, overall, have an improvement in our Biology scores. The next one is in math. This comparison, we looked at data with our staff again, and this one here, we compared 2018, 2019 on the school report card. Although we met target, our target overall, you can see that our lowest-performing students were improved, but were below the target set forth by the state. So, now we're having our next target for all of our students to be something that we will shoot for, although improving our special needs groups is still going to be a priority, because that is certainly where we need to work more with our staff to help in some of the concepts within the math curriculum. Our next goal was social-emotional wellness. We felt very positive when Dr. Mayestis came out with his theme, This Is Me, two years ago, because we were already there in 2017, and trying to build personalization and build off of what was set forth by the previous administration, and trying to get advisory and personalization to be a key component of the culture and climate of Plymouth South. So, when we jumped on the social-emotional wellness, started to really dive deep into what the Department of Education puts out for SEL activities in Castle. And basically, what we did is, we thought, well, how can we reach a large group of students at the same time, focus on the personalization within? We had a bunch of great guest speakers come in, we had Ed Garrity, we had Taylor Story, we did If They Had Known, the Clay Soper Story. In all reality, we did a showing at night for the Clay Soper Story that a student actually was at, and because of that performance, had actually, was at a party after, I wanna say prom, and was able to transport a student, not at our school, but at another school, transported a student to the hospital because they had drank too much, and was just basically left by their friends. And that student picked that person up with another friend, and took that person to the hospital, and from little things like that, make a huge difference. Specific results have had impacts of positive and negative concerns, but our connection and our changes with our students in decision-making is really what our focus is going to be on. I mean, our vaping infractions, and the administration will tell you behind us, is that our sense detections that we receive in the bathrooms that we put in with those detectors have drastically been reduced, and drastically, our referrals for vaping have been reduced. And I think that we're doing a lot to educate students in advisory, we're also doing a lot to educate our students in our health curriculums. So, I think ultimately, the social-emotional wellness strategies overall have been very positive for us, and we're not gonna let go of that. And goal three is exposure to post-secondary education. Now, although you will see that our data indicates that about 64% of our students go off to two- or four-year schools, I want to remind you that 50% of those students graduating in the senior class are in the career and technical education program, of which, a percentage of those students go right to work. You know, right now, there's 40-plus students on an internship or co-op at either Plymouth North or Plymouth South High School, and I would bet, a lot of those students are going to continue to work before they even think about going off to college. So, I just want to keep that in the back of your mind, that although maybe it might be as high as, say, some other districts surrounding us, we do have a major component that allows kids to go right to work. And the theory behind going right to a four-year college now is a little jaded, in the sense that maybe that might be a different way to go, in even advanced training in a two-year community college, if that. So, our strategic initiatives were to, again, to provide opportunities for our kids to meet with post-secondary institutions, and of course, one thing that we did is we brought those institutions into our school. Our guidance department has a guidance counselor, Ms. Lindsay Seba, who does an amazing job of bringing colleges and universities, as well as the military and tech institutes into our school, for our students to meet with them during K Block. It's just a phenomenal, if you, we have the schedule posted on Facebook, and it's amazing what she set up for the fall. And also, all the hard work that our counselors have done with the Naviance, and communicating with our parents, they have done an amazing job. We're just so fortunate, we have a great guidance department, we couldn't be more blessed. Couple highlights I just wanted to mention real quick, in the school report card, advanced coursework completion, and the Mass Core. I just want to highlight, 77% of our 11th and 12th graders completed at least one advanced course, and keep in mind that 77% is higher than the state average, but I want you to also remember that not all the Chapter 74 programs, as Dr. Campbell and I looked at the other day, are listed as considered to be an advanced course, so I just want to keep that in mind. 80% of our graduates completed the Mass Core, and the accountability piece of this as well, same idea, is that in some of our vocational technical program, they have different requirements. For example, if you're in certain vocational technical programs, if you look in our program of studies, we have less requirements for four years of, say, or three years of a lab-based science. So, we all do, all of our students do four years of English and math, but we do have a reduction in some of those other areas, like, like science and foreign language. And obviously, in 2019, we're very proud of our Advanced Placement program. We had 251 students take the test, or, excuse me, enrolled in Advanced Placement, and we'd had 595 AP exams taken last year. Dr. Buchanan, department head of our guidance, shared with me the other day that we'll be ordering 601 exams this year for AP. And obviously, we're encouraging our students to take that learning stretch, and find themselves in more rigorous, depth of knowledge is gonna be increased if they just place themselves in those situations around other students, that it will be working just as hard. The next one, oops, sorry about that, Mr. Very positive stat, grade-nine retention data, hard work done by many wonderful teachers in the freshman academy. This is a very successful model that the district adopted, I don't know how many years ago it's been, I think it was like my first year as a housemaster, way back when. So, 16, 17, two students, 17, 18, one, and 18, 19, one, and it's important to note that there is a lot of hard work done over the summer by our summer school curriculum and teachers, but I do want to say that this is retained, this means retention of a student, meaning they had to repeat their freshman year, and these are really good numbers for us. Okay, so, we jump to the three-year proposed goals for the new school improvement plan, and with the group that I have with us here, they're gonna touch on a few of the things And with the group that I have with us here, they're going to touch on a few of the things briefly. And if you have any more specific questions about the report or the annual plan, I'd be happy to answer those. So, we start off with goal number one. Common planning time in core subjects in co-taught classes is the idea to enhance overall academic achievement of all students and the depth of learning within our classrooms. So, here, our students will have a deeper connection with the materials and will be held to higher expectations. That will relate and have us funnel in from our MCAS data analysis and help us answer some of the questions in our school report card from the Department of Ed. So, I'm going to ask that Ms. Tosovich and Mr. Baker touch on how this will help our students academically, specifically transitioning from grade-nine to grade-10, because oftentimes, the sophomore year, as we've mentioned at these meetings before, is one of the most vulnerable ones for students academically, coming out of the nurturing freshman academy. And also, how it might help us in other areas such as MSN co-taught classes as well.
Ms. Tosovich. Oh, I have this. Sorry.
Hi, good evening. I've been teaching on the academy for seven years now. And this is a nice segue to that last slide because the academy really is a successful model, and I've seen it firsthand, just in the changes and the numbers that have gone on for the past seven years. One of the biggest things that I can attribute to our success is the common planning time amongst ninth-grade teachers, MSNs, guidance, and administration. So, I believe that if we can spread that strategy into the 10th grade and have the common planning time with the 10th grade, then we can make those connections and kind of bridge that gap. That way, students aren't leaving ninth grade with all of these just wonderful supports and going straight into the lion's den, so to speak, of 10th grade with new expectations and not so much less support, but just less connected support between all of us.
And I'd just like to talk for one second about the vocational aspect in our shop setting where we have our theory area. We've been able to have common planning time with vocational teachers in our construction area, and they've been able to collaborate, and the kids will get a lot more out of their theory time. The same in the auto collision and auto technology area. The collaboration in those areas has made the lessons far more smooth and much more continuity in the shop because they tend to see how the different disciplines cross back and forth, and it makes the lessons much smoother. And it's also allowed us to make better use of times when we're on big projects, just like working in this building here. The time that we were able to maximize in the classroom, discussing the things that we would do here and how it would work out in the field, made projects like this move much, much smoother and much more industry-standard type work. So, it was a huge benefit for us. Thank you.
Chris, as I continue on here, our second goal is, we have the, as I said, we're not giving up on it, the enhanced student social and emotional learning. And we've gotten deeper with this to the point where through our personalization and we'll establish our school-wide theme of social emotional growth, health, welfare, we're also tapping into safety, some adjustments with our current safety practice. But I wanted to have Mr. Levitt and Mr. Dagman talk a little bit about why it is essential to have social emotional learning activities part of our courses throughout the day as either openers or closers of different activities for our kids.
Thank you for having me. Being a teacher and coach and in my history at Plymouth South, wearing many different hats, I believe that it is essential to have social emotional learning activities part of our courses because not only does or has research shown that enhance student performance in the classroom in our assessments, but more importantly, it increases students' pro-social behaviors such as empathy, kindness, sharing. It improves students' attitudes towards school. It can reduce depression and anxiety among the students, which unfortunately nowadays is, we're seeing all across the board. And in addition to that, and just communication amongst the students, we're seeing less and less face-to-face communication through technology and social media. And it's very important for the students to attain these life skills in communicating with one another face-to-face.
Hi, as I mentioned, my daughter is a sophomore at Plymouth South, and she's my only child. So, I think a lot of this is obvious, so I'll just try to be brief. But kids have so much going on these days, it's incredible. The social media piece, a cellphone, which is a great thing, but also a pretty terrible thing at times. Everything from, you know, when I was in high school, I tell my daughter all the time, you didn't necessarily know what parties you weren't going to, you didn't know what friends were doing, maybe with other friends, or what a boy or a girl you liked was doing. You see that all now at just looking at your phone. It's instantaneous and the anxiety and I think sometimes confusion from just the constant deluge of information. It's pretty amazing that I think the kids do as well as they do when you consider, I think, the time that we're all in and all the information and the stress and the anxiety that is there. So, to have social emotional training or teaching incorporated into the school to sort of supplement what a parent is doing, I think is so crucial. Again, I don't think it really requires telling it. I think everybody understands that. So, I just also wanted to mention, school safety is something that I know will be talked about later and was just mentioned. That's something that, again, people have so much access to, and they see images. And I've had my daughter at times, as well as some of her friends, just say, that's something we think of every day, every single day. So, to have support around that for kids to be able to be sort of well-adjusted and healthy, I think, again, sort of goes without saying how important it is.
To continue on with this goal, I've asked Julianne to share with us what type of things have you seen us do over the past few years that truly have helped make our students make better decisions?
So, the most impactful assembly we've had in the last year, I think, was about drug and alcohol used right before prom. A mother, a mother and a former New England Patriots player came in and spoke about how drugs have impacted their lives. It was called Taylor's Story. The mom's story of how her daughter died due to alcohol poisoning and her friend's ignorance taught me that I needed to be in a position that I can advocate and help a person who is intoxicated. And the former New England Patriots player made me notice that I don't ever want to put the opportunities I have on, or I have on the line just to use drugs. These are powerful stories to tell before prom, and I think it made kids think about being safe after prom. And also, tomorrow, we're going to have an assemble, juniors and seniors are going to have an assembly that I think is along the same lines, and I think it will, again, reiterate this idea of being safe with alcohol or if, or just to stay away from it completely.
And continuing to move on to our third goal, our goal is to improve family and community engagement. Our full, our goal this year really is a focus on our faculty to be trained in the use of Panorama, which has been presented to this committee already. And we have all the champions of this work already been trained even further by Dr. Campbell and the Panorama instructors. So, we're looking to move and branch this out further into with our faculty. So, I've asked Dr. Buchanan to speak a little bit on what can Panorama provide for our faculty as they interact with our students on a daily basis.
So, I've had the opportunity to have two of the trainings so far with Panorama. Panorama has proven to play a powerful role in improving school climate and culture, teaching and learning, family and community engagement, and student social emotional learning. This platform will allow Plymouth South faculty to look at various types of data in one place, including grades, attendance, conduct, teacher, counselor, and administration notes, as well as interventions. It'll create more of a team community that can also be discussed at bi-weekly child study team meetings.
Excellent, thank you. Also, as Dr. Sorenson asked earlier about our parent forum, I've asked Carrie Enokian to speak on what would, what do you think the parent forums would, how they would benefit our school community as a whole?
Hello. So, just a little bit about the parent forums. So, we've all heard the phrase, "It takes a village." Well, guess what, guys? You are all of our village, right? So, between home and school, we create a partnership to raise our children and teach them life skills and knowledge necessary to be successful in this world. Parent forums are a way that our village can communicate important issues that are facing our children and community. These forums help us send a clear message to our children that we are all working together. Schools may see different issues than what we see when we're at home with our kids. So, it's important that we all keep these communication lines open so that we don't get any mixed messages between us. It gives our kids, it lets our kids know that we're all in this together. I know my kids don't communicate everything with me. So, you know, just having these forums and me being able to go to all of you guys and the educators and like asking them what's going on and them telling me, you know, straight from the horse's mouth, what's going on? What's going on at school? What's going on with my kids that I don't get to see? It's important to me. I know it's important to all of us.
Excellent, thank you. Also, we mentioned safety as part of this goal. So, I asked Michelle Ireland, who also teaches in another district, why she thinks Alice is a better option for our staff and our students rather than the traditional lockdown procedures of the past.
Hi, I teach in Hanover, and we implemented Alice five years ago. The old lockdown encouraged a passive response from everyone and centrally controlled by, unfortunately, somebody who may or may not be under duress or in crisis or available or really know what's going on all over the building. The Alice procedure, which you've already been presented, is not a linear set of steps. It is take all these tools and be able to use what you have, what you know, and your situation with the people around you, and empowers everyone to make the best choice for their situation and for that time. It looks different at different grade levels. Clearly, at the elementary, it is a little more teacher-led, adult-led, but would empower middle schoolers, high schoolers, even the students to take an active part in helping and making good decisions with all these tools that are also a life skill and can be used somewhere else. You may unfortunately end up in crisis. How can I get out of here? Or barricade or lock down, right? Or counter.
Fantastic, thank you. Also, staying with goal number three, staff had indicated a need to collaborate, and a lot of this came from our guidance office as well as from Mr. Bell himself. In an effort to improve overall student performance as they transition back from, transition back to high school from an out-of-district placement. So, I asked Mr. Bell maybe to think about why would a consistent transition plan for our students, when they return back from out-of-district placement, be important to ensure emotional wellness for our students?
Yeah, I can just speak a little bit on that from my experience. It all turned out okay. We've had some rough spots. You know, when my daughter came back, my daughter was hospitalized last year. And when she came back, it was just, okay, here's all the stuff you need to make up. There was no real reprieve, you know? It was almost like a professional being in the workforce that no one's there to do the job. When you go on vacation, you come back to 150 emails. I can speak to that directly. So, so anyways, you know, I was, you know, I was a nuisance to the guidance people, and I couldn't believe that I wasn't really going to get any consideration for that. So, but it worked out in the end. She really mustered up and ended the year, actually, it was her best year, but not on paper. On paper, it's her worst year. So, you know, just my thought would be, maybe there's some room to extend the period so when the kid comes back. And I haven't talked to anyone on staff about this, but just a thought I had is when the kid comes back, maybe they have like a place to go in the school where they don't have to go to the classes yet. They go to school, but perhaps instead of going to gym, go get that chemistry made up, you know? That type of thing. So, I don't know, just a thought I had, trying to come up with some answers, but maybe that's...
Yeah, and we'll be definitely working on that. Thank you. I asked Colby and Catherine to speak on culture and climate at Plymouth South High School. Colby, if you could hold that mic right up to your mouth there so they can hear you. Thanks.
All right. I said that the teachers at Plymouth South are always there for support, whether it's emotional or schoolwork. There's someone after school for you every day, and they're willing to help you if maybe you don't receive the support that you need at home or elsewhere with your friends. I said that the teachers are there to help and like, they'll really help you with any venture you want to take on. I know I wanted to start a club last year, and I've had the support of probably about five or six teachers that helped me start that club, and it's going very successful this year. And then I said the students go above and beyond their sense of school pride and their ability to come together for like a cause or even for like the Friday night football games and come together for a certain theme, such as blackout or the USA theme that we've had recently, is amazing just seeing a whole school, maybe not friends with all these people, but they all come together for this one particular cause.
Awesome, thank you. Catherine?
So, I talked a little bit more about more specifics that I've noticed at Plymouth South. So, first, I said you can form closer connections with teachers through both sports and clubs. A lot of my teachers are so willing to start clubs. And this year, one of my teachers actually started a club that we recommended to her. And I think it's awesome that almost half of my teachers that I have in my schedule have a club, and I learned so much more about them because sometimes they can't teach things that they absolutely love that are very specific to them. And I learned so much more about them through these clubs that I attend almost every day after school. The same thing with sports. A lot of my teachers are sports coaches, and whether it be I'm watching the game or I'm participating in the game, I learn a lot more about my coaches, a lot more about my teachers through them being coaches and being able to see what they love outside of school. The school has recently made a huge effort to support people from all walks of life. We recently did a Go Gold Day for pediatric cancer, and as Alex said, we raised over $2,000. And Julianne Morse, right here, she also did a suicide awareness day where the school wore black. So, I think this is just really unique to the culture at Plymouth South. These types of schools kind of tie the whole community together, and it's what's really unique to all of us. You always feel valued when you go above and beyond expectations, whether it be from an honors breakfast or an AP breakfast. I think these are really important because it shows that students that are pushing themselves extra to take that extra AP class or to get honors that term are really feeling appreciated for all their hard work. And last, the theme of last year, "This Is Me," really brought out the true essence of our school. Many of my teachers did activities, as I mentioned last year, that go beyond just a grade. You learn more about your teachers, you learn more about your classmates, who you've been in school with for almost, for me, 10, 11 years. We did many activities last year, a simple about, as like an "All About Me" poster, which these small things add up, and they really define what's truly unique about Plymouth South.
Awesome, thank you, Catherine. As we transition to the last couple of slides, and then we'll certainly engage in conversation and questions, I just wanted to share with you that aside from these goals that we have for a school improvement plan, ongoing school-wide goals in the next slide is just things that we are constantly working on. And we do have, we're very proud to say that our most recent NIESC five-year report only had one minor corrective action plan, and it's because of all the hard work that was done previously. But I would have to say that that, one of those things that we also do have to do is we have to work on our school-wide rubrics and condense those down. Literacy still is consistent in all disciplines, including vocational. Three times a year, literacy assignments outside of what the general curriculum is, is to be done in each of the classes. Obviously, the personalization piece is huge for us, so we still make major efforts to improve our advisory program. School safety will be an ongoing goal this year, as mentioned, and meaning professional development. So, that kind of segues into, I was going to have Mrs. Sylvia, our CCTE director, talk a little bit about how we develop professional development. That sounded good. How we facilitate professional development, create and initiate professional development at Plymouth South High School.
Thank you. Professional development is defined as a career-long process in which educators fine-tune their teaching practices to meet the needs of their students. Well, here at Plymouth South High School, along with the rest of the district, we take a visionary approach to professional development in which our educators claim ownership of their own professional growth. This is done through a collaborative process, decision-making process regarding their own PD choices, as you can see up here on the slide. Everything from Google to fake news versus real news, co-teaching, planning, Alice introduction, literacy, social emotional learning, that is all staff-driven. So, that's a very unique opportunity. You know, we talk about so much student voice being paramount to education for a student to grow. Well, on the professional development side, teacher voice... Well, on the professional development side, teacher voice in their own professional development increases the level of an educator's engagement and thus their professional growth as well. So the things we ask for our students, we so too give our staff for their opportunity to learn and to grow. Personalization is the most effective way to make PD a relevant resource for each and every educator here at Plymouth South High School. And finally, it's up to the administration, both at the district level, which it is, and through Mr. Hannah's leadership at the building level here at Plymouth South, along with the rest of the district, to ensure that all professional development, the personalized professional development that you see here up on this slide is also aligned to our district goals as well as our school goals. So I think that that opportunity that the educators in this district have to play a significant role in their own growth is absolutely powerful.
Thank you, Cindy. And that's very true. And we're so fortunate to have choice sessions because our teachers jump at the opportunity to be a presenter. And we're very fortunate that they want to share the best practices that are going on in their classroom with, with everybody. So, a few photos in our slideshow. And that's, right there is Julianne's Suicide Awareness Day. I think we probably had 100% participation from our staff. And a ton of students jumped on board as well. It was great. So at this point in time, I'd like to ask the committee if you had any questions that we could answer for you.
Sure. Well, let me say that you've done a very good job of communicating to us what the culture is like at Plymouth South High School. And it looks really positive. It feels very positive. You've also done a really good job telling us where you want to be in the years to come, and that looks equally positive. So I think if that was your goal, you've accomplished it here this evening.
Thank you.
Committee members. Ms. Badger?
I don't have a question, just a comment, just to thank all of you. Like, like I think was said before we started, I figure, I think this is the biggest group I've seen in my nine years on the committee. So thank you all for coming out and spending a part of your Monday night. I don't know what else you, you know, have on your plans usually, but thank you for taking that away from your family and, you know, everything else, so, for coming out.
Thank you, Ms. Badger.
Thank you.
Ms. Hunt?
I echo, and I think most of you know how I feel. I'm my oldest son is a, I'm a, I'm a south and a north mom. South still has a really special, warm place in my heart. And, and it was before the new school and I, you know, you don't think it can get any better, even back then. And, and obviously, it's, it's just getting better and better. So, you know, it's great. I had a question about the, your, when you had mentioned your daughter going back to school. And I know that my, I went through, I experienced the same thing with my daughter. She missed five, five weeks of school. She had a head injury her junior year, which was a really critical year for her to be out. And because it was a head injury, they had this concussion plan of going back to school. And it actually worked out really good for her. And I'm wondering if we can, there's some way that we can kind of take that model with any instance because she was allowed to go do her math homework in the guidance office instead of going to gym. And she was allowed to go to the nurse's office anytime she wanted. She could go home anytime she wanted.
Yeah, that's a great, great point. We, as soon as, as soon as we started to wrap our heads around this last year, I've been working with the guidance department on creating a protocol that everyone's gonna follow. Whether that be an easy transition back in, a partial day schedule, providing, as Mr. Bell suggested, a place to go to be able to get caught up and just get their feet back on the ground inside those walls.
It's hard.
Something that we're working on. And we don't have it actually in writing, but we talk about it at our guidance admin meetings, which we meet every other week. And that's one thing that we're gonna put in play so that anybody will know, any parent will know, when they transition back in, we're gonna be doing X, Y, and Z.
It's really hard because on top of everything, these kids' worlds are turned upside down, missing that much school. I mean, with my daughter, she couldn't go to work, she couldn't drive, she couldn't hang out with her friends, she didn't go to school. It was, she couldn't watch TV. So just coming back to school was, was rough. And I, I know that with concussions, it is a clear plan to go back to school. So, you know, just take that model and, you know, just kind of do it for any circumstances when there's a long period of time that the kids miss school. Because it did, I mean, she rallied and got her CNA that year. I mean, it was a lot of catching up. And like you said, it's, it's hard. And I totally.
It was her worst year on paper, but the best year.
Exactly. I mean, I get it. It was hard. So, but the school made it a lot easier for her. So. She didn't take advantage of half of what she was supposed to take advantage of.
I have just a couple, a couple of items as well. I'm gonna follow that, that sort of thinking. I had a conversation with a family of a, a young man who was suspended from school. And because he was suspended from school and he had never been suspended in his life before, and he's also suffering with depression, he wanted to give up. He wanted to give up because I, my first suspension, I have to live up to that and I can't make up all this work. And so I raised this with Dr. Miestis last year, that sort of transition planning isn't just for hospitalization. Sometimes kids get themselves in trouble and they need a crutch to get back. And I think if we develop some sort of a program, I think it'll help kids across the board. I also want to say that we've observed as a school committee over the years, the topic of social-emotional learning was never mentioned. And now every, every program that comes before us, it has a high priority and that's very important for us. We all know that. Those kids get off the bus every single morning and you never know what they're gonna bring into the building. So you have to be ready for that. And that's, I think, really glad to hear that as a high priority in your presentation. I did want to ask one specific question because I really would like to know, when we do, when you do the common planning time that was so effective in the freshman academy that we heard about before, just give me just some brief example, what do they do in common planning time? I'm assuming it's across disciplines.
We brought Ms. LaRanger for that particular question. But we do have a couple of different structures in place. But Mr. LaRanger, feel free to jump in as I mentioned that. I personally, when I was on the freshman academy, I was in his role and it was, it was structured. And we have a lot, there's a couple of different things that happen. They can meet by department and work on the alignment of the curriculum and strategic instructional strategies. But then they also work together as a team. And when that is probably the most powerful thing when they're talking about kids.
What we do is we meet, we meet twice a week by team. And so all, all the team members, the guidance counselor, and myself meet. And we, the first thing we try to do is identify at-risk kids. Kids that are not doing well socially, we're worried about they're quiet in the classroom, what's going on in their lives. And the second piece is their academic standing. So if they're, if they've got a D or worse in any class, then we bring them up in that, in that conversation. And we reach out with, what's really nice is you have all the teachers there. So if one kid said that Joey Joe's not doing really well in math, and then the biology teacher says, you know what? He's really struggling in biology too, now we can identify that that student needs extra support. So we'll, we'll give that extra support. And I personally will meet with the kid, find out what's going on, and then we put some procedures into place. And we ask the teachers all to contact home too. We think that piece is really important to, to get the parents and guardians involvement in this.
And freshman academy was the first to really become masterful at panoramas of developing intervention plans and taking notes about kids that they are seeing in their different courses as maybe struggling. And that has been shared with the guidance counselors. And then the other piece in common planning time is having that special education teacher there is really important at that, at that level. Because, you know, there might be an outstanding MSN, but they're not a biology teacher. And they need to understand what the goals and objectives are and what the standards are that are moving forward to help these kids along the way and what they're gonna be tackling in each unit. So I think that piece is really important as well.
And it saves kids. I mean, kids come back into, into the classroom thinking at least people care about them and, and they're concerned about their grades. And I can't tell you how many times I pull a kid in and they said, oh my God, I thought I was in trouble. I says, no, we care. We want to make sure, you know, we see that you're struggling in a couple of classes and we reach out to the parents. And I think that's why our retention rate is so low. I mean, we, we are proactive to get it and to get, to get to these kids. And, and I think that's what's really important about the freshman academy, you know, that common planning.
When I, when I asked the question, I was hoping that was the answer. That's, that's an excellent approach to the, to that particular group of students who need that little extra to keep them involved. So I'm real glad to hear that.
It's like anything else. Kids, they, they feel like you care about them. They, they get motivated, you know?
Yeah, and just to go off that quickly too, with that common planning team model, like how it's set up for the freshman teachers at that time, they're all off together. So it allows the opportunity for parents to come in, to meet with a full team. So not just meeting with one or two teachers, but having four core teachers, you know, the special education teacher if necessary, the guidance counselor, the administrator. And so it should just all be on the same page with the student present. It makes the world of difference. And I think me not being on a freshman team anymore, that's what I miss most. You know, it was great.
I think, I think the approach is positive and not, and not, it's not a consequence for a behavior. It's a, it's a positive approach to, to need, and I think that's really important. Other committee members with questions or comments? Dr. Miestis?
Yeah, just one, one thing. I, I appreciate Mr. Bell and Mr. Dagno, your, your comments regarding the current state of education and, and social lives of kids. You know, when I, I, my, my middle son graduated in 2010, my youngest 2014. And to look at the difference between when they went through high school and the life of a high school child today, it has changed dramatically. And I, I was at a, 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 a school district up north last week. And the, the same conversation was taking place. And the big question was, you know, what's happened? What has happened with our, with our kids and the immediacy and the anxiety? And, and the same topics that we are discussing in our schools, they're discussing it across the country, much less across the state. So I think the strategies that, you know, South High has put in place over the years, freshman academy, the whole smaller in communities model, those connections that kids can make. And sometimes kids don't want us to know what's going on. But I think it's important that we do at least try to understand what their lives are like because it's a lot different and it's evolving. So I think from a school's perspective and South High School's perspective, the relationship that they have with staff and teachers in that school is extremely important. And we, we hope that those models continue to evolve because the evolution of a high school student is, is just, who, who knows where things will be, right? But how do we prepare and evolve as time goes forward? But I, I think what you've presented tonight is a, a very good attempt at trying to, to mold to those changes.
There's a ton of, ton of resources out there too, through the department that specifically, some of their SCI laws. We're just very fortunate that people are on board.
All right. Well, thank you all. Did a great job. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I think they win.
They totally win.
That's right.
Good job, South.
I know. We gotta represent.
Back to the committee. Is there anything on the old business list that we need to bring up this evening? Okay, not seeing any hands.
Nope. I'm sorry, I was fixing my mic. Sorry.
The next item is new business. Committee members with new business. Seeing no hands. Superintendent's report. Dr. Miestis?
Yes, I have a few things to report on. One of the things that you have in your school committee agenda tonight, I, I put in there just so you could have a sense of understanding for as we approach our budget season. There's a couple of letters in there from private schools that we send our kids to, private placements. You can take a look at the, the letters for updating of tuition for some of these locations. And you, and you can get a sense as to, as to what our dilemmas are when we take a look at tuitions for out-of-district placements. So we do have these discussions quite a bit with the general public as to, you know, why we have some challenges in, in the area of special education. Those documents can give you some sense of understanding that we do have some challenges. Okay? Sticking on the whole theme of, of, of budget, we, we, we will see an increase to our, our chapter 70 dollars for next year. It's a slight increase. I believe that there was a great deal of effort from legislators from around the Commonwealth that really helped to, to, to boost some of those, those dollars. Plymouth, you know, will realize some increases as we get through the budget process. We will clearly articulate exactly what those increases are and how it impacts us. And I will repeat this, and I, I say this every time we talk about chapter 70. Chapter 70 is state aid to education to offset the cost for communities, to offset these bills that we have for education. So remember that this is not, you know, found money. This is money that goes to, towards helping to buy down the debt that we have for education. With that said, I talked to Senator DiMascio last Friday. He did attempt to have an amendment to the budget that was relative to regional school transportation. That was unsuccessful. And, and he, I, I talked to him at length on, on Friday. He said that pretty much every community had some level of a, a similar amendment. And it, it makes it very difficult when you have an amendment that is, is very specific to a community condition like Plymouth has. And he said, we'll keep trying different avenues. But the language that was put together by Ms. Badger and Mr. Costin, Dr. Sorensen, this was information that was shared with Senator DiMascio and he did approach an amendment. But as he said, he, he fought a valiant fight, but it just did not go very far because of the continual need that communities have for relief. Very, very difficult financial relief. As was mentioned, we have NEASC coming up at North High School. Maeve did mention that and, and that is something the school committee's invited to on the 20th. 3:00 PM would probably be a good time to be there. And Shishikahama. We received a packet from Shishikahama, a newsletter that was in Japanese and they sent over a translated version. So you can actually see there's a, a great deal of excitement after our group left. And also, we received information that they are planning to come in October 2020. And I shared that information with town manager, Arregui, today. But I think we need to probably figure out exactly what we need to do to welcome them for the, the 2020 season. And that's when they feel it would be good to come. I think it's good to have a delegation come in October, the kids can come to school, which is actually fantastic. And they can have an opportunity to, to go to class and, and see what it's like to be in school here in, in Plymouth. So we, we do have a lot of information moving forward. Keeping in mind that we do have town meeting coming up on the 19th. I will be going to a motions meeting on the 9th and town meeting preview on the 10th. And if anything comes up relative to the school department, I'll let you know. But as you probably know, if you've taken a look at town meeting, the agenda, the school department does not have any items on this town meeting. But, you know, our presence sometimes is, is requested for unusual circumstances. So we will leave it at that. And I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Sorensen.
Any questions? Dr. Miestis on his, following his report. Ms. Hunt?
I know that when you were talking about the transportation, and I know we'll talk about it closer to the MAS C thing, but they have two transportation-related issues that they're working on. And one of them, I went to the meeting this week, seems like a no-brainer too. It's for foster care students to pull out the transportation cost. I guess the money's there with the federal government, always has been. DCF has just never asked for it. So that's kind of like if we kind of, I mean, that's kind of good news. It'll help our budget a, a little bit. Also, it's, we're looking to change the rules as far as the bids go for the transportation companies so that it's a little bit more.
Competitive.
Yeah. Easy. So there are, like, even though that didn't pass, there are some things in the horizon that might help us in the future.
So just, just two, two follow-ups and then a third piece with the MAS C joint conference. So I think it's important that, you know, the, the, the transportation issues for us are, are a little bit unusual and I think we need to keep pushing on those. And it's, the, 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 the community, as you all know, is, is, at a, at a level with tax increases that they would love to see some level of, of, of relief. We'll see how that plays out. We'll see how the numbers shake out. And I think of school districts are, across Commonwealth are in the same position. I mean, we're just not getting more tax revenue to help with this. We'll continue to work on that. So the, the last thing I have, and, and relative to the MAS C joint conference, if you received the last mailing from MAS C, it gave a breakout of all the different sessions. Look on the second page. I believe it's the second page. The Massachusetts Chronicle's presentation that we are doing is going to be one of the morning features. So if you're there, we'll be there presenting and that'll be November 9th, I believe. But it's gonna be kind of neat for us to be in that presence.
And I did bring that with me to the board meeting too, so they all knew about.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Badger?
I just want to do a point of like clarification, I guess, for Ms. Hunt. Based, so the, the amendment that Mr. Costin and I kind of.
Based, so the, the amendment that Mr. Kostin and I kind of put together was based on mileage for the town of Plymouth.
Oh, yeah. No, I know. I'm just saying, these are some other things that might help relieve our budget.
So that's why it was specific to us.
Right. But these are other things, I'm just saying that can, in the future, will help relieve I know that.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to further explain.
Yeah, no, that, it's nothing really to do with that.
No.
It's just some other, there are, it's just, seems like there's a lot of transportation conversations going on.
Yes.
All right, moving to retirements.
Yes, I have two retirements to report on tonight. Louann Briggs, a para educator at the Plymouth Early Childhood Center, will be retiring on November 1st. And Doug Ozilius, a grade-two classroom teacher at West Elementary, after 18 years of service, will be retiring in January. And Louann had 21 years of service.
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, we thank these individuals for their service to Plymouth Public Schools and wish them a happy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Any letters, Mr. Morgan?
No correspondence this evening.
No correspondence this evening. Reports and proposals from committee members. The floor is open. Committee members, reports and proposals. Okay, seeing no hands. PYDC, any report from that? Dr. Campbell?
Just briefly, the, the notes that you have in electronic school board are from the last meeting that Mrs. Burgess spoke of at the last meeting, so you'll notice that there's some things mentioned there. Our next meeting is this Friday, October 11th. And I believe next school committee meeting, we'll actually have Kelly Maycomber from PYDC coming here to present on our Communities That Care survey. You may recall that we do this every other year, grade seven to 12. And this survey asks students to self, self-identify certain protective factors as well as risk factors that they may experience in their lives. So we'll have a presentation on those results for you and talk about some of the things we're doing as a district and how PYDC is helping with, with that work.
Looking forward to that. That's, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on that report? Okay. Building Committee, Mr. Morgan?
We haven't met since our last meeting.
Okay. Personnel?
Yes. We have two certificated appointments. We have 42 coach and advisor appointments. It's the time of year we do all our year-to-year appointments. Classified appointments, we have 14. Leaves and absences, there are four. In resignations, there are 11.
All right. Any questions on that report? We have a homeschool approval necessary this evening. Dr. Miestis?
Yes, tonight we have 10 homeschool plans that have been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and they meet the requirements set forth by this committee, and I recommend approval.
You heard the recommendation? Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the homeschool education plans as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by, Mr. Morgan? Any question to that motion? All right. Everybody here has voted in favor. Thank you. Accounts payable. Ms. Hunt.
Just waiting for my thing to go. Okay. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant, number S-101019, dated October 10th, 2019, in the amount of $918,093.73, as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second. Is there a question on the warrant? Okay. Thank you. That motion passes. Obsolete equipment.
Yes, tonight we have equipment from Plymouth Community Intermediate School, and this is three padded cots that are worn out and not in very good shape, and we recommend disposal of this equipment.
Okay, on that recommendation? Mr. Selly moves it. It's seconded by Ms. Badger. Any questions? Okay, we'll vote on that one. Everybody voted for that. And then we have obsolete equipment from the high schools.
Yes, we have Plymouth North and Plymouth South High School have mathematics textbooks that are beyond their publication, and I recommend approval of these items presented tonight.
Ooh, sorry.
Ms. Badger?
I, I think my question is, if they're outdated for us, why are we giving them to Hanover High School? Sorry.
I don't want to talk, I can't speak for Hanover High School.
They're behind us.
But they're, they're very old.
Okay. And they don't mind that they're very old. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion, no, we have a motion, Mr. Selly moved it.
Seconded by, Mr. Morgan? Any other question on this? All right, please vote. I need to mention, don't need to. Okay, thank you. Everybody voted in favor. At this point, I will ask the committee for a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing non-union personnel matter. Ms. Badger? No, Ms. Hunt?
Oh, I move that we go into executive session.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Badger. Any questions?